Your TV sets, yes, I am running the meeting tonight.
You're not Mary.
I'm not Mary. She is not in town. Uh, she's not here, anyway. Excused. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Kitzler?
Here.
Alder Moore?
Here.
Alder Corr?
Here.
Alder Holmquist?
Here.
Alder Spate?
Here.
Acting Mayor Wood?
Here. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the June 19th and June 27th?
So moved.
Meetings?
Second.
Are there any additions, changes to those? Seeing none, all those in favor approving the minutes as written, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there anyone here who would like to appear on an item not on the agenda? Doesn't look like it. I'll declare the Appearance Section closed. Item E, public hearing, we have none. Item F is the consent agenda, a number of approval of operator license or bartender licenses.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the consent agenda is adopted. Under Council Items, Action Items, G, Unfinished Business. And we do have a closed session related to some of the Riverfront Project matters. What I would propose, however, is that we jump down to item 2A under New Business, because we have Gary Becker here to talk about all the TIF changes. And once we complete that, then I think he would be free to go. If that's okay with everybody?
Sure.
Seeing no objection, let's move to item 2A, New Business. Consideration of Resolution 17-7-2197 Initiating Amendments of Tax, Increment Districts Number Four, Number Five, Number Seven, and Number Nine in the City of Manona from the Community Development Authority. Gary, you want to come on up?
Sure.
We want a motion to suspend.
Um, sure.
I move to suspend the rules and take this item out of order.
Second.
All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Um, do you want to? Opposed? It was, I heard everybody say aye. You're right. Motion carries to suspend the rules. Is there a motion on the resolution?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. So we've got a motion on the floor. Gary, you want to go ahead?
Sure. There are a number of adjustments to these four tax increment districts that the Community Development Authority would like to make. So we're batching all of these amendments to go through the process at the same time. Whoops. So TID number four is the South Manona Drive Tax Increment District. It essentially extends from Broadway to Frostwood Commons approximately. A little bit past that. That TIF district has a property, there's two TIF districts that have a property that has lost over a million dollars in value. And so we want to remove those properties from those two TIFs. So TIF number four, there's a property in that category. So we're doing a boundary adjustment by removing that property and then extending the life of that district by four years. Statutes allows a city to extend the life by, in most current TIFs, it's three years. But TIF number four was created at a time when they allowed a four-year extension. So we'll be requesting a four-year extension and then a boundary of, or an amendment of the boundary by removing the one parcel. TID number five is the Heritage Manona TIF District. That one, we knew from the get-go, is going to be very, very tight. This is an opportunity to adjust that life, to extend the life of that district by three years. TID number seven is the North Manona Drive TIF District. That runs from just north of Nichols all the way to the high school. And there's another property in that district that has lost over a million dollars in value. And the CDA would like to remove that. However, that particular property, removing it would destroy the contiguity. So the TIF boundary has to be contiguous. And so the CDA is proposing removing all the properties in the northern half of the TIF district. So essentially, cutting that TIF in half and taking several properties out. Most of the properties are, there's been very little interest in development and it will likely be a while before something positive happens there. So the city could create another TIF district when something is ready to happen. The alternative to removing those parcels would be to add two more parcels in to bridge that gap. And those happen to be residential properties. And so the CDA had a discussion whether to add or just remove the whole northern half. And the decision was to remove the northern half. So that's the track we're on there. And then TID number nine is the Riverfront Redevelopment TIF. A number of properties have been removed and significant loss in value has occurred in the two years since the district was created. And so there's an, the loss has been greater than 10% a year, or for two years in a row. So state law allows the city to reset the base value of that TIF district. And so that's, that'll be the amendment to that TIF district, as well as an amendment of the project plan. There's some budgetary and project cost items that will be amended as well. So this resolution will just, is authorization by the City Council to initiate that amendment process for those four TIF districts. We expect to hold the public hearing August 22nd and come back to council with a resolution to approve these amendments at your September meeting. Any questions?
Yeah, this, this will also require Joint Review Board approval, too.
That's correct.
Okay. Hold your state.
A couple of questions. How common is it for a municipality to do this?
It's fairly common. There are, I'd say about half of the actions that are taken regarding TIF districts in terms of creating, creating and dissolving and then amending, about half of those actions are amendments.
And they're amendments that deal with kind of pushing off properties that is problematic?
Um, yeah. I mean, the boundary amendments, you can amend the boundary of a TIF district up to four times during its life.
Okay.
So this would be your first boundary amendment, actually, for, I think, for any of your TIF districts. So Manona hasn't been doing that.
Right.
Making these kinds of adjustments. So this is a good opportunity to do that.
Could you? I'm sorry.
I also wanted to ask about the issue of reassigning the value to TID number nine. Like, how does that play into, I mean, what's the advantage to the city of doing that?
Well, by lowering the base value, any new development, you're going to gain more increment from any new development that occurs.
Yes, okay.
So it'll improve the financial performance of the TIF over its life.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Alder Kitzler?
Just a clarification question. And I don't know if this is better suited for CDA. When we were discussing it at CDA, sorry, TID seven, the new boundary line, was, I believe, cutting it off at that MNI bank and then cutting it off at the parking lot.
Correct.
And I see the map here shows something a little different. And again, I don't, I know it still has a lot of processes and approvals to go through. So maybe this isn't a final one, but.
Yeah, no. I have another map here that shows what the new boundary is. I don't know if there's a way of projecting that. Or here's one with both boundaries showing the change.
And in the grand scheme of things, it probably isn't a big deal, but I just, and I'm talking about the main MNI facility.
Right.
Yeah.
That's right. Yep. And so the, I don't know if this is going to.
There we go. You can just turn the camera.
She used to be Alder Kitzler's job. He used to sit on the end. You got extra pay for it.
Oh, perfect. Yeah, so, so this is that parking lot here that you're talking about. Here's the bank building. And so the new boundary will come up and exclude that parking lot and come around.
Okay.
So it's like, there's two BMO Harris banks on Manona Drive, like a block apart. This is the southern, the southern one. And so basically, then, from that point all the way to the northern boundary will be removed from TIF seven.
Correct.
Thanks.
Yeah, and just for the, just so you know, these are the two, let's see here. It would have been, these two parcels, no. Let's see. Yeah, these two parcels are what would have been, had to make the bridge there to make, to retain the northern half of the district.
And those are residential?
Yeah. Correct. Actually, it would be these parcels in here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe with regard to both, TIF four and seven, could, why, why is it a problem for a TIF district to have properties in them that have lost a lot of value? Or why would you want to then take them out?
Well, it detracts, again, it takes away from the increment. And so for these properties, when the TIF district was created, like in TID four, that property was valued at about 2.4 million. And today, it's valued at a little under a million dollars. So that, that loss in value takes away from the increment that's been created by other properties.
So basically, it would create a 1.4 million dollar hole that you have to dig your way out of before you can show any increment.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Alder Holmquist?
Does the base value reset in current day, or does it reset back to?
It resets to what the value, we're anticipating, so the municipal value report that the Department of Revenue releases on August 15th every year is the milestone for measuring how the TIF district is performing. And so when that comes out on August 15th, we're fully expecting it to show a second year of greater than a 10% decline in the value of the district. And so that's the trigger for resetting the base value. And so it'll be reset to what the value will show on August 15th.
But the increment difference will exclude the original base value of the property that will be excluded.
Right.
You're talking about four and seven.
No, he's talking about nine. No?
Nine.
Right. The change in, four and seven were basically taking out properties. So those, correct me if I'm wrong, but those values won't count. They won't be in the TIF anymore.
Right. That's right.
TIF nine, what we're doing is taking previous or current, technically, the current value, I guess. Well, taking the, the value, I think, was around 5 million dollars of those properties.
Something like that. I don't have.
And would be reduced to about 500,000, I think?
Something like that.
And that, so that, anyway, the new lower number would be the new base.
Sure. And so for the ones that were excluding a property or a whole chunk of properties, the base value of that TIF for the performance difference?
Right.
Off the bottom, do all those then get removed out of what was the base?
That's right.
To look at performance?
That's right. Yes, that's right.
And so the value would go back for the one that was 2. whatever million. It would go back to the original base number that you were using to look at the performance of that TIF?
It'll go back, it'll be reduced by that amount. Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Thanks.
My question was along the same lines, but I just want to rephrase it to clarify. So that 2.4 million dollar bank building and all the building.
That wasn't the bank building that I was talking about at that value. That was, that was in TID four.
Right. But that's what my question is about. Or that my, what I don't understand is when we take the northern part of TIF four out of that, you've got property that was worth something when we created the district.
Correct.
Does all of that base value essentially get taken out of the district for a future calculation of its increment?
Yeah. So you're just dealing with the remain, with the properties that remain.
Okay.
In that, the remaining parcels are what creates the increment. And that's where most of the increment has been created in that district.
Okay. So just hypothetically, I mean, I'm making up numbers, but if we're, if the original value is 5 million for all the properties we're removing and 10 million for those below, that, it started as a 15 million dollar value and then whatever we added to it is the increment.
That's right. And it's from this time on. So it's, you know, whatever expenses were incurred and recovered while those properties were in the TIF, all that's still good.
Right.
So it's just from this moment on, you've got a new base value and the increment that was created in those properties that remain in the district will continue to create increment.
Okay.
Going forward.
Okay.
Can I say one thing, too? Loss of, the decline in those properties costs the increment, those TIF four and TIF seven, it's about 30,000 they're losing in the increment that they go ahead. So, you know, times over how many years is what you would lose by not doing this. So it's roughly about 30,000 dollars.
Per year.
Per year of loss. So you maybe, the 30,000 worth of increment, since they went down, you didn't get any payout.
Okay. Okay, I'll shoot.
So, kind of to follow up on a related question, and you think you may have answered this, but just again to clarify, in TIF seven in particular, we've got some project, or some TIF expenditures in that part that we're taking out.
Uh huh.
Just those expenditures, still, those are TIF costs that we?
Yeah. Well, actually, I think those expenditures were made before the TIF district was actually created. There was a redevelopment district that was created first, and then the city made the acquisitions. And then if it was in a TIF district, when the land is sold, then you would charge that as a write-down to the TIF. So you could still recover the expenditure of acquiring the land. But it's the difference between what you sell the property for and what you bought it for, is the land write-down.
That's right. We bought the two properties, I think, yep, in that northern end when it was a redevelopment district but not TIF.
Correct.
And we're not changing the boundaries of the redevelopment district?
No. So you can create another, another TIF district up there at that point in time and you still have that redevelopment area underlying it?
Hold your state.
Entirely separate question. I just want to clarify, our ability to create TIF districts has to do with the total value of all of the districts? Is that accurate?
It has to do with the increment. So what percentage, so you total up all the increment in all the TIF districts and you see what percentage of your total equalized value that is. And then when you look at creating a new district, you look at the base value of that district. And when you add all that up together, it can't be more than 12% of the city's equalized value.
Okay.
And so we're above that right now. And I haven't done the math yet, too, because we've got the base value reset and all that, to, you know, they offset each, the numbers are moving around a lot. But I think we may be just a hair under that 12% one, all said and done with this.
So until we retire the TID that's going to get retired in a few years, we won't be able to create a new one?
Right. That's the situation right now. That's correct. Yeah. Other questions?
Okay. And so all of this will be coming, or different stages of this stuff will be coming back to us again in the future.
That's correct.
All right? Then.
Can we call the questions, since there's a motion?
We may. I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Gary.
Thanks for moving me up.
You're welcome. So move back to the top of unfinished business. Item 1A, convening closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute, Section 1985, Sub 1, Sub E, deliberating or negotiating to purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. That is for the Riverfront Development Agreement with Yohara Riverfront Development LLC. Our, YRFD Phase One Land Inc., YRFD Phase Two Land Inc., and YRFD Phase Three Land Inc. This is the Galway Proposal. And also the MMSD Interceptor Agreement. And also Section 1985, Sub 1, Sub G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. Payment to Highland Dental Ceramics. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
No.
Second.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Spate?
Aye.
Alder Kitzler?
Aye.
Alder Moore?
Aye.
Alder Corr? Aye.
Alder Holmquist? Aye.
All right. Motion is approved. We are in closed session.
Ooh, that's a dig.
Just for, Joan. God, have Joan.
Yeah.
I did, yeah.
Here's.
Waiting on you, Joan.
This is way past my bedtime.
Who delivers coffee?
I think we needed that two hours ago.
Here it comes. Okay, you guys ready?
Are they awake?
All right. We are reconvening in open session. Find our place on the agenda. Item 2C is consideration of Resolution 17-6-2190, approving a development agreement between the City of Manona and Yohara Riverfront Development LLC. YRFD Phase One Land Inc., YRFD Phase Two Land Inc., and YRFD Phase Three Land Inc., Galway Companies. Is there a motion?
I will move to approve the development agreement contingent upon CDA approval with the corrections that were noted in closed session.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The agreement is approved with contingency as stated in the motion. Item 2, or rather, under unfinished business D, consideration of Resolution 17-6-2189, authorization of new construction proposed within redevelopment area number nine for Yohara Commons Development GDP and Phase One PIP. Sunny?
The resolution in the packets is asking for a city council authorization of the new construction proposed in redevelopment area nine. This action's required by state statutes which the redevelopment plan was created under. I'll just note that the resolution includes the whereas clause that the CDA has made a recommendation that the work is consistent with the goals of the plan. This has not yet occurred, so the city council might want to approve it contingent on CDA approval.
All right. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution authorizing new construction contingent upon a CDA approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I almost voted on that. It's a habit. So we already took care of the TIF, 2A, we already voted on.
802B.
2B.
2B, consider, South, these are all, everything else is start for immediate action, consideration of Resolution 17-7-2193, approving the acquisition of property at 6418 Bridge Road by the CDA from the city attorney. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
I'll move to suspend the rules and take this item out of order.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll move approval of the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
2C, consideration of Resolution 17-7-2194, a resolution to authorize payment to Highland Dental Ceramics from the city attorney. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules and take this item out of order?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 2C, consideration of Resolution 17-7-2194, a resolution to authorize payment to Highland Dental Ceramics from the city attorney. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules and take this item out of order?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion on the resolution?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 2D, consideration of Resolution 17-7-2195, award of bid for Madison Metropolitan Sewer District Sewer Relocation Project. Sunny?
So the Riverfront Redevelopment project necessitates the relocation of the existing 60-inch MMSD Southeast Interceptor that runs under the Chase Bank Building at 802 West Broadway. Strand engineers have prepared plans for us to complete that work. And MMSD's commission approved the engineering plans to do this work at their meeting last Thursday, July 13th. We also had a bid opening on July 13th. We received three bids and the lowest bidder was Speedway Sand and Gravel Incorporated in the amount of 844,446.41. This was less than the engineer's probable cost of 1.5 to 1.6 million. And that figure includes the cost of the actual sewer pipe, whereas this 844,000 dollar number does not. We, and a separate agenda item, will be considering that as a separate expense at the cost of 139,000 dollars. It's necessary in the redevelopment schedule for the city to order the pipe separately, directly from the manufacturer, rather than wait for the sewer relocation contractor to order it because it has a six-week lead time to be delivered from Hobos in Texas to the site.
Okay. Is there a motion to suspend the rule, or Chad?
Yes, I, well, and we haven't done that yet, suspended. I'll move to suspend the rules and take this item out of order.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I will move to approve this bid with the addendum. I believe this is where we need it.
No, it's just.
I think it's the next item. Oh, okay. I'll move to approve it as is.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 2E, consideration of Resolution 17-7-2199, approving an interceptor relocation agreement with Madison Metropolitan Sewer District from the city attorney. Is there a motion to suspend the rules? with Madison Metropolitan Sewer District from the city attorney, is there a motion to suspend the rules?
So, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The rules are suspended, is there a motion on the resolution?
I will move approval of the resolution with the addition of language that was agreed upon and discussed in closed session, should I read this item?
It's not necessary.
Okay.
Okay, is there a second to, and everybody's clear, we got a copy of that language, is everybody clear on what we're adding? Okay, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 2F, consideration of resolution 17 dash 7 dash 2200, approving payment of 139,840 dollars to Hobas Pipe USA to procure delivery of a 63-inch sewer pipe for the M M S D Southeast Interceptor Relocation Project, is there a motion to suspend the rules? So moved?
Is there a second? Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The rules are suspended, is there a motion on the resolution?
I move to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Good.
This resolution is to authorize the purchase of the Hobas 63-inch pipe directly from the manufacturer in the cost of 139 dollars, or 139,000 dollars, 139,840 dollars.
Okay.
As discussed.
Right. Any questions, comments on this? All those in favor of approve?
I don't know, anybody need a motion?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Didn't like, yeah. All those in favor of approving the resolution, uh, no, this is. See if you're always saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And item G, consideration of resolution 17 dash 7 dash 2196, approving the planned commission recommendation for the Yohara Commons Development GDP and Phase One PIP. Is there a motion to suspend?
I move to suspend the rules and take this item out of order.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The rules are suspended, is there a motion on the resolution?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, this resolution asks for city council action on the planned commission's recommendation. Their recommendation was included in your packets with two different zoning permits, um, with action that was taken at their meeting on June 26th. The general development plan was approved with the two findings of fact and 17 conditions as noted, and the Phase One Precise Implementation Plan was approved, um, as proposed on the plans in your packet with the three findings of fact and 33 conditions of approval as noted in your packets. Uh, this is required per Article F of the zoning code, which is the section for planned community developments. Planned Commission must approve it and that, or, take an action, and then the city council, um, takes action on that planned commission recommendation.
So, can you explain the distinction between, I'm confused as to the distinction between D and G, frankly?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, D, uh, in section one, and G in section two. To me, they're both. Um. One is coming from plan, and the other one's coming from CDA, is that the difference?
Yes, and there's more than that, um, usually the, the city council doesn't have to approve zoning permits that the planned commission passes unless they are following a separate procedure that's outlined in Article F of the zoning code, which is planned community developments, and when a developer chooses to use that section of the code, they're offered, um, different flexibilities with the zoning code that they would not have in other sections of the zoning code if they were following, like, the community design district standards or retail business standards, for example. So the procedures in this P C D planned community development code are different, and therefore, our city council approves it because that part's written in, in this separate code. Um, the other item is just for authori-, or, consistency with the redevelopment plan, which is totally separate than planned commission action.
Okay.
Discussion, Alder State?
Is there anything that you would like to bring to our attention in here that, that deviates from what would be required, uh, under the normal zoning procedure?
Um, for example, in the general development plan, finding of fact number two, uh, deals with, I'm sorry, which, which one was that? Looking for the one about parking.
It's a thorough document, not to say exhaustive.
It's on the precise implementation zoning permit, finding of fact number two, for example, identifies that the planned commission determined parking was sufficient for this development based on a shared parking agreement between the sites and some flexibility that allowed them to have less parking than what would be required in Appendix A of the zoning code, which a normal development following, like a retail business zoning district, would need to follow. So, given the flexibility afforded by Article F of the zoning code, they were able to take advantage of a shared parking agreement.
Okay.
And the planned commission did determine that with that shared parking agreement and the temporary parking lot that's proposed on the Phase Three site, that parking was adequate for the overall general development plan. Similarly, with stormwater, the approach would be more regional to achieve the required sediment reduction on the site and runoff rate control, um, regionally rather than for each site individually.
Okay. Good, thank you, any other questions, comments?
I think, uh, I meant to important note that there are a variety of items that are in the 33 pieces that, um, have either city staff being able to address those items, or those items to be brought back to planned commission for further discussion, just given the vast amount to review for the GDP, as well as the PIP, and needing to have those simultaneously move forward. So, we, we made some recommendations that city staff be able to address some of those items, with the recognition that some of those items will need to come back for some further clarification and discussion about how they'll, um, to be sure they meet all of our standards.
Two of the items that are required to return to planned commission are the final landscaping plan and lighting photometric plan.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think that's appropriate, and I think the, those of us who aren't on plan, um, kind of rely on plan and staff to, to, uh, handle this side of it, and have pretty high level of confidence that things will be done appropriately, and understand, there's just a huge amount of detail on this, aside from all the other, the CDA type side of it, so. Any other comments? All those in favor of approving the resolution signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Anybody have any report that they feel like they really need to give? Anybody, Alder, uh, Moore, any report?
No, no, nothing to report.
Alder Kitzler?
Let me see here, no.
Alder Kerr?
No, thank you.
Alder Holmquist?
No report.
Alder State?
Nope.
Uh, me either. City clerk?
No report, nah.
City administrator?
Nah.
Lady attorney, you're already talked enough tonight.
No report.
Uh, then, there aren't any reports, there are no appointments, a motion to adjourn is in order.
I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.